Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Meeting number 2025-1023R. City Clerk, please.
Tonight's music selection made by our wonderful City Attorney, Terrell Pyburn. "Monster Mash" by Bobby Boris Pickett.[22.48][22.48](Laughter). At our next City Commission meeting on November 13th, the music selection will be made by City Manager Sheila Rose. As we begin, we kindly ask that all mobile devices be silenced to ensure the best possible sound quality. Please speak clearly and directly into the microphone, and remember to mute your microphone when you are not speaking. Should anyone experience difficulty hearing any time, please raise your hand, and a hearing device will be provided to you. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Rydel.
Here.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Commissioner Brody.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Here.
Mayor Rowley.
Here.
City Manager Rose.
Here.
City Attorney Pyburn.
Here.
At this time, I'd like to ask the Marines that are present in the room, please start us on our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.[84.03][84.03](Applause). Go ahead. Go ahead. Go ahead. Start us in the pledge, please. Come on, come on, just start us. Just start the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. You're fine. Yes, please. I... Yep. (Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and God bless you. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Thank you. Okay.
This meeting is being conducted live with a physical quorum present. The material for today's meeting is available online at coconutcreek.gov. Anyone wishing to appeal any decision made will need a record of the proceedings, and for such purpose may need to ensure that a verbatim recording of the proceedings is made, including the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based. The archive of this meeting may be requested from the City Clerk or may be heard online at coconutcreek.gov. If you haven't already, please silence your mobile devices. If you must take a phone call, please excuse yourself and step outside. Respect and proper decorum will be maintained throughout the meeting. Vocal outbursts, cheering, cheering or applause can impair the rights of others and derail the decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. We just got notice that Officer Vincent Anthony Cardurelli is... Cardurelli is running late, so we're going to present the proclamations, and when Officer gets here, Officer Vincent, then we will have our presentation. Thank you. Swearing in.
He just arrived.
Oh, he just arrived. Great. So then, let's keep the agenda on schedule. A swearing-in ceremony for our new police officer, Vincent Anthony Cardurelli. Chief... Yes, he just walked in. Chief of Police Fred Hofer will conduct the presentation, and City Clerk...
He's not here. No, what? No, he's not here, not yet.
All right, let's do the proclam...
He's gonna... He's gonna do... He's gonna be doing laps later tonight for missing his own swearing-in.[264.27][264.27](Laughter).
All right. False information, sorry. We're going to proceed with the proclamations. Sandy, please read our first proclamation. A proclamation recognizing October 2025 as Community Planning Month. Commissioner Welch will read the proclamation and present it to the Sustainable Development Planning Staff led by Justin Profit and Liz Agula, and the Planning and Zoning Board.
Absolutely. All right. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas planners can help navigate the change with data-driven insights and professional expertise that provide better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning require public, elected, and appointed officials who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to every community and how planners are uniquely positioned to identify solutions to communities' most difficult housing, transportation, and land use challenges, and whereas thoughtful development project designs have the power to transform spaces into equitable and community-centered destinations that strengthen our shared future, and whereas the celebration of Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of appointed planning board members who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Coconut Creek, and whereas the city of Coconut Creek proudly recognizes the invaluable efforts of the professional planning staff, regional planners, the Planning and Zoning Board, and City Commission, and extends heartfelt gratitude for their steadfast commitment to shaping a vibrant and well-planned future for our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Commission of the City of Coconut Creek hereby proclaims the month of October 2025 as Community Planning Month. And the city of Coconut Creek, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month, is signed by the mayor and the commission and attested by our City Clerk. Yay. Thank you.[443.56][443.56](Applause).
Thank you, Commissioner Welch, and I just wanna... We're all gonna... Well, I guess we'll come up and do a photo real quick, but before we do that, I just want to point out a couple new faces that we have in our department, and especially in our Urban Design Division. We have our new Planning Manager, DeAndrea Moyes. She comes... Yes. She comes to us from the city of Hallandale Beach, and we also have Shelley Grant, who comes to us from the city of Deerfield Beach. We have a lot... We have a great staff, and you know, it's appropriate time to celebrate community planning, especially coming off of all of the approvals and the work that we've done with Main Street and a lot of the other projects. So I want to thank all of the staff. I want to thank the Planning and Zoning Board members that are here, and everybody in the community. Community planning involves everyone, everyone in this room. So we're really lucky to have great staff, and a very supportive board, and City Commission, and City Administration. So thank you very much, and we'll come up and take photos.[505.02][505.02](Applause).
Would the Planning Board please come up?
Come on up.[513.22][513.22](Applause).
Thank you. Thank you for all the time and effort you put in on behalf of the city. Thank you. Okay. A proclamation recognizing October 23 to the 31st, 2025, as Red Ribbon Week. Commissioner Brody will read the proclamation into the record and present it to the Young Marines, David Gonzalez and Timothy Wilson... Willis.
Can I have the Young Marines come up? Come on, left, right, left, right, left, right. Let's go. Center of the stage and face her. This is a little bit of an honor for me to be able to read. Obviously, you guys know my background with being in the military and working with veterans right now, so this is a nice little one for me to read. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drugs, drug use, and the trafficking of drugs, and whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts, and whereas there is hope in winning a war on drugs, and that hope lies in the education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of the organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League of Foster... of healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas the governments and the communities and leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities, and whereas the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camerana, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference, and whereas October 23rd through the 31st has been designated as a National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore be resolved that the City Commission of Coconut Creek hereby proclaims the 23rd through the 31st of 2025 as Red Ribbon Week, signed by the mayor and the commission.[686.91][686.91](Applause).
We should go up to them. They deserve us coming up.[696.91][696.91](Applause). Oh. We should go up to them. They deserve us coming up.[708.91][708.91](Applause). Okay. Number four, proclamation recognizing October 23rd, 2025. You know, before I read this, I have to say, I have to congratulate these young men, and please, I mean, look what they're accomplishing, and God bless them, and really makes us feel good. Thank you. Now we know we're in safe hands. Thank you.[732.20][732.20](Applause). Okay. A proclamation recognizing October 23, 2025, as Coconut Creek Public Safety Day. Commissioner Rydel will read the proclamation into the record and present it to Chief of Police Fred Hofer and Deputy Chief of Police Henry Cabrera. Commissioner Rydel.
Super cool, though. We have members in the back from the Coconut Creek Public Safety Department. If you were a member of that department, please raise your hand. Look at that, see?[787.91][787.91](Applause). That is something extraordinarily unique in this day and age, so thank you for everyone's service and longevity to the city. Whereas the Coconut Creek Public Safety Department was established in 1982, and all public safety officers were dual-certified as both a police officer and firefighters. And whereas the Coconut Creek Public Safety Department transitioned to a dedicated police department in 2000. Whereas only five officers originally hired as public safety officers are still employed by the city of Coconut Creek, the others retired. Whereas the city of Coconut Creek honors the legacy and acknowledges the significant contributions of those who serve as public safety officers. And whereas the city of Coconut Creek commemorates the unique history of the Coconut Creek Police Department and its longstanding commitment to protect and serve our community in an effort to enhance the quality of life for our residents and visitors. And whereas in celebration of the Coconut Creek Police Department's history and in recognition of the service and sacrifices of those who helped shape our identity, the city of Coconut Creek establishes an annual public... Everything okay back there? Okay. Does an annual public... Public Safety Day. Therefore be it resolved that the City Commission of the City of Coconut Creek, Florida, proclaims October 23rd, 2025 as its first annual Coconut Creek Public Safety Day. In this city, we are proudly saluting our service members and our law enforcement officers in our community, and thank you every day. It's signed by the mayor, the vice mayor, all the commission, and attested to by the City Clerk. Chief, I'll present it to you, but I know you want to address the commission and the audience.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners, Vice Mayor, Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk. As you already recognize, there are several... Well, five of us there left, but there are several that are here that did retire, so I would ask all of the existing public safety officers that currently work for Coconut Creek Police Department to come on up, and all of those that are retired also to come on up.[902.04][902.04](Applause). We're all gonna come up. Just a minute. So tonight, we do gather to celebrate a truly unique and commendable group of individuals within our department's history. Those that were dedicated people who have served our community in not one, but in two of the most vital public safety roles at one time, both police and fire. This history is better known as the Coconut Creek Public Safety Department. For those of you who may not know, the city of Coconut Creek had a public safety department from its founding in 1967 until the departments were separated in May of 2000. During that time, these officers, or PSO-2s, as they were once called, would patrol the city as police officers. In an instant, they could be dispatched to fight a house fire or car fire, respond to medical calls, or even rescue a cat out of a tree. They didn't just change hats, they literally changed their uniforms, sometimes in the middle of the street to shock... to the shock of many residents, just to meet the next call for help. The skills, discipline, and compassion honed during their years as firefighters undoubtedly enriched their service as police officers. They brought a unique perspective, a deep understanding of crisis, and an inherent ability to remain calm under pressure, qualities that are invaluable in both professions. It is with immense pride that we present this proclamation, acknowledging their exceptional dual service, and thanking them for their extraordinary contributions to our city. They not only set the foundation for our current police department, but also established a legacy of unparalleled courage, adaptability, and unwavering commitment to this community. And I wanted to personally thank all of you for your service. We appreciate it, and so does the city.[998.91][998.91](Applause).
Actually, we wanted to take a picture with all of you guys because you laid the foundation down for our city and for our great police department. Too late. Thank you. But thank you, thank you for your service. And all our officers, thank you every day. God bless you and stay safe. You make us proud. Thank you. Okay.[1044.41][1044.41](Applause). Now is the exciting part. A swearing-in ceremony for our new police officer, Vincent Anthony Cardelli.[1051.33][1051.33](Applause). Okay. Police... Chief of Police Fred Hofer will conduct the presentation, and City Clerk Kavanaugh will administer the oath of office.
All right. Let's begin. So I'd like to ask Vinnie, come on up. I like this part because they all stare at you instead of me. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit about Officer Cardurelli, and then we'll swear him in. Officer Vincent Cardurelli was born at West Boca Medical Center. He spent his entire life in Coconut Creek where he attended Trade Winds Elementary, Lyons Creek Middle, and eventually graduated from Monarch High School. Growing up, he dreamed of becoming a professional football player or basketball player. However, being a five-foot-eight quarterback and shooting guard has its limitations. Although he played throughout high school and received a few small scholarship offers, he knew his path was meant to be something greater. From a young age, Officer Cardurelli always enjoyed helping others and making a positive impact. That passion led him to begin his career at the Coconut Creek Community Center as a recreation attendant.[1116.28][1116.28](Applause). Before we stole him.[1118.28][1118.28](Laughter). In that role, he helped run various programs across the city, including basketball, football, and pickleball leagues. Through his work, he was able to touch the lives of many children in our community, and the impact he had on them inspired him deeply. This made him think about how he could make an even greater difference, not just in the lives of kids, but throughout all of Coconut Creek. That's when Vincent realized that he wanted to become a police officer. At the time, our PD was not hiring non-certified officers, so he took the opportunity to join as a records technician.[1155.78][1155.78](Laughter). Before we stole him. Officer Cardurelli said, looking back, it was a blessing in disguise. He had spent... He said spending a year in records gave him valuable behind-the-scenes experience and a deeper understanding of the police department's operations, which helped prepare him for what was ahead. From April to September, he advised he was honored and grateful to attend the police academy. The experience provided him with a foundational training to become an effective officer. He developed key skills in law enforcement, communication, defensive tactics, and crisis management. More importantly, he grew both personally and professionally. Officer Cardurelli is incredibly thankful for his opportunity and excited to begin this next chapter, and we look forward to having him. He looks forward to building strong relationships with his team and making a lasting difference in the community that has shaped who he is today. And here to support Officer Cardurelli tonight are his mother, father, brother, and sister. So at this time...
Yes, and I'd also like to add... I'd also like to add that his Parks and Rec family are here as well, and his rec... and the records department supervisor, so...[1241.41][1241.41](Applause).
Mayor, he was also the leading scorer in the Margate Coconut Creek basketball game as well.
I have to tell you, I was asked, are we doing it again this year? Okay. Again. All right.
So, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead. Anything else?
No, I just want to say how happy we are that you decided to stay with us. We're on it. Thank you. Yes, you are family.
So at this time, I would like to ask the Clerk to please administer the oath.
(Inaudible). I solemnly swear that I support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the State of Florida. And the ordinances of the State of Florida that I can requalify for the role of officer under the Constitution of the State and the Highway Bill. I fulfill the duties of a police officer for the City of Florida, on which I am now a member.[1322.91][1322.91](Applause).
So Vincent will be pinned tonight by his mother, and I'd like to ask her to come on up. You're allowed two pokes. That's the rule. Two pokes.[1346.30][1346.30](Laughter). So mom, stay up there. Mom, stay up there. Vinnie's family and friends, want to come on up and take a picture with him?
After the family, I'm gonna ask everybody from Parks and Rec and records to come on up and take a picture with Vinnie as well. Officer Vinnie.
Really special. You grew up here.
Yeah, yeah. That's pretty cool. And another.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the family to stay. Will the family please stay on stage to take a separate picture? Just the family.[1400.91][1400.91](Applause).
Commissioners, you want to take a picture with him? Two more, Vinnie. Two more pictures. Should we have him do the push-ups in front of... For the... Yeah, we will. And then one last picture if everybody from the Coconut Creek Police Department, including the records unit, come on up.[1433.24][1433.24](Applause).[1434.24] And here to support Officer Cardrelli tonight are his mother, father, brother, and sister. So at this time, yep.
Yes, and I'd also like to add, I'd also like to add that his Parks and Rec family are here as well and his rec, and the records department supervisor. So.
Mayor, he was also the leading scorer in the Margate Coconut Creek basketball game as well.
I have to tell you, I was asked, are we doing it again this year? Okay. Again. All right. Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead. Anything else?
No, I just want to say how happy we are that you decided to stay with us. We're on it. Thank you. Yes, you are family.
So at this time, I would like to ask the clerk to please administer the oath.
I solemnly swear that I support protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and the State of Florida. And the ordinances of the State of Florida that actually qualify. For the whole office under the Constitution of the State. And the Iowa bill. About the duties of a police officer. For the City of Concordia. On which I am now. And thank you.
So Vincent will be pinned tonight by his mother, and I'd like to ask her to come on up. You're allowed two pokes. That's the rule. Two pokes. Mom, stay up there. Vinny's family and friends want to come on up and take a picture with him?
After the family, I'm going to ask everybody from Parks and Rec and records to come on up and take a picture with Vinny as well. Officer Vinny.
Really special. You grew up here.
Yeah. Yeah. That's pretty cool. And another.
Will the family please stay on stage to take a separate picture? Just the family.
Two more, Vinny, two more pictures. Should we have him do the push-ups in front of, for the? Yeah. Karen McCallum needs that. Her point is that late, so. We're doing this every year, so. Yeah, we will. And then one last picture if everybody from the Coconut Creek Police Department, including the records unit, come on up.
All right. Thanks for the honesty.
Okay, everybody, stay safe out there, you guys and girls in blue. Now we'll have input from the public. We will now have input on non-agenda or consent agenda items. I remind everyone wishing to speak that all comments must pertain to city business. Respect and proper decorum will be maintained. Behavior that disrupts the orderly conduct of this meeting, such as clapping, shouting, booing, and cheering, is not permitted. Any person who violates the decorum rules will be subject to removal from the commission chambers. City Clerk Kavanaugh, is there anyone who has signed in to speak on non-agenda or consent agenda items?
Yes, Mayor. We have three individuals that signed up to speak this evening on non-agenda items. The first individual is Tammy LaTiri.
Okay.
Hi, Tammy LaTiri, 3302 Karen Bowl Circle South, Coconut Creek 33066. I'm here to talk about Broward County's plans for municipal waste and how it affects Coconut Creek. They are very fond of marketable trash. To them, trash is cash. One such project they have in mind is a sewage wastewater sludge dryer. They want to take our sewage, dry it out, turn it into pellets, and then sell it as fertilizer to farmlands across America. It's full of radioactive contaminants, carcinogenic chemicals, and God knows what else. Where do they want to build that facility? One such location is directly across from Tradewinds Park, the township, and Windmore. They want to use fuel from the landfill, excess fuel, to fuel it, I'm sorry, methane, to fuel this sludge dryer. How are they going to get the methane there? It's highly flammable. If you truck it, it, the industry term is called a bomb truck. The other method would be pipelines. Where would those pipelines go? From the landfill, directly onto Sample Road, right to the location off of Blount Road. Methane is, again, highly flammable. Sludge dryers are explosive. There have been five such explosions in the last few years. One involved a death in New York City. Why, why is Broward County always picking on Coconut Creek, Deerfield, and Pompano? You know, these trucks would be on the roads for Pompano and Deerfield. We would definitely encounter them in our city, and God forbid an explosion happened. We're basically screwed. So I hope there's going to be some pushback on that plan. And the other thing I want to say is Broward County's master plan, they talk a lot about behavioral change in Section 6.1. The behavioral change to reducing municipal waste and increasing the recycling waste rates needs to start with the Broward County Commissioners. Their government facilities are woefully inadequate when it comes to recycling bins. They're miniscule, they're paltry, they're hard to find, they're few and far between. There's no signage, there's nothing that would let you know that these people are intent on reducing waste like they claim and increasing recycling rates. So I hope you point that out to them, and I hope you get an environmentalist to join the Solid Waste Authority. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll definitely take that under consideration, for sure. Thank you. Yes, City Clerk, is there anyone else?
Yes, the next speaker is Ron Shamai.
I am Ron Shamai, 4562 San Melina Drive, Coconut Creek, Florida. I'm here to talk about two subjects. I hope I'll manage to do both of them. And the first one is more important started with a story. My son had a birthday a couple of weeks ago, nine years old, and we celebrated it at home. We have a very good neighbor for years that her son is my best friend, her son is the best friend of my elderly son, 16-year-old, came to us and said, hey, you're having a birthday. Can you invite a kid that never was ever in a birthday in his life? Me and my wife were shocked from the question, and we said, of course. She brought him over, they had fun. She didn't come with one, she came with six. But it was a great party, kids had fun, and some of those kids even learned what a gift is. Those kids, of part, everybody here knows them, is SO Children Village, not far away from us. And I'm a coach for many years, volunteering coach, volunteering whatever I can. And it immediately came up to mind, and I said, why is these kids are not in the programs? More digging in, I do know that Coconut Creek helps them in the camps in the summer, but during the year, these kids are not in the program. And I'm saying that because most of the best friends of all my kids come from the program, don't come from school. Because in these programs, they meet afternoon, they meet after, they're a team, they have one goal in mind, you know, it's more camaraderie stuff. And I asked why they're not coming, and I found that the answer is because they can't get there. They can't get to practices, they can't get to tryouts, they can't get, they're five minutes away. They're literally five minutes away from Winston Park, and they can't get to tryouts, they can't get to. So I was asking around and saying, I came with an idea, saying maybe one of the Rangers, that there's tons of cars there, can, you know, make him qualify to do these pickups, set it up, because all coaches set up their own practices. And I spoke with some parents, some parents that were in my party, they were shocked from the situation as well. And when I started bringing it up, said, I'll volunteer, I'll pick them up, but it has to be organized, it has to be structured, otherwise it won't work. We need these kids, these kids need friends, these kids need to have something else than going to those houses, staying there bored to death and not participating in our, I'm not talking about even the cost that I know that Coconut Creek participates, or the payment, I don't know how that will go, but we have to get them to the fields. We have to get them to football, soccer, baseball, basketball, and even volleyball down here in the community center in the summertime. It's just a pity those kids are going to a waste. I have 19 seconds, I hope you'll, real quick, and so I'm willing to help in any way that's possible to do that and put a program together. They'll need a budget for it somehow, I think, but we need to get it done. Second thing is, and I hope you'll allow me to give me another 30 seconds, I want to talk about, there's a program that, with the help of Commissioner Josh here, we put together a year ago, that coaches, volunteer coaches will receive $50 back from, from their payment when they volunteer to coach in these programs of the city. So since then, what happened is, yeah, you're getting $50, but they raised the price. So, you know, you guys raised the price on that, that's one thing. But the idea is not the $50, the idea is to bring the coaches to come, we want volunteers. So we wanted to push that for that to happen. And I'm asking you, and I mean it, if my kids, and they did it for a couple of years, volunteered here to create the MASH for Halloween, when they came the next day, did they ever ask to pay to enter?
Ron, as much as we appreciate this subject, I can't allow you to go any further, but we have your message and we can speak after. All right. Thank you so much. It is a worthy cause, and thank you.
And the next speaker, who's also the last speaker, is Michael Guardino.
Hello. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. It's nice to see you all. I also wanted to take a minute to mention how nice it was to see Mr. Commissioner Brody healthy and vibrant and doing his job. I like to see that. My name is Mike Guardino. I am the director of a local non-for-profit soccer club here in the city. I also am the chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I've been fighting to upgrade our sports program, programming over the past year or two. Been a long fight, but every now and then, something happens that really illustrates how bad the problem is. So I just wanted to share with you my experiences over the past few weekends. We've been paying for a month now to line one of the soccer fields. There are no lined soccer fields in the city, so we're paying out of pocket to line the field. We have a group that plays on Sunday mornings. This group was bumped off of the field that we paid to line and told to use a different field due to field maintenance. Okay, I can live with that. I want the fields to be maintained. When we moved to the new field, we showed up to play in the morning, there were two adult leagues already taking place on the field that they moved us off of. So in short, we paid to line the fields, we are a local not-for-profit soccer club, 200 to 250 kids. We had to move off of the field so that adults, who are significantly more likely to damage the fields, can play on the field that we paid to line. I don't love it, but I hate how much worse it gets. The two adult teams were from the city of Pompano and the city of West Palm Beach. So I am baffled by this. I spend a lot of money on my property taxes. Our fields should be primarily for our residents. Our fields should be primarily for our youth. We should be developing programs that help our youth, not desperate for a $50 rental fee, and renting our fields to Pompano and West Palm Beach adults. If the problem is of revenue stream, the city has no soccer club. Build a soccer club. You could make significantly more revenue off of running a good, solid program than the $50 we got for renting our field to adults from Pompano and West Palm Beach. To me, this is a little bit of a no-brainer, but I have been fighting this battle for three or four years now with very little headway. So I'm simply asking that you take a step back, listen to this story that I just told you, and decide for yourself what should be happening with the city fields that my tax dollars are paying for. Also, you're aware of the consultant being brought in? I'd like to point out, just using his numbers, 1,200 kids in this city play soccer. We're not doing anything for them. Please consider this. Thank you for your time. Nice to see you, Commissioner Brody. Glad you're healthy. Take care.
If I might, Mayor, just a moment. In fact, Michael and I have been speaking for the last couple of months, and we did bring a consultant in to do an analysis of the sports fields specifically because of some of the concerns related to soccer. And I hope you all have had a chance to start the conversations with the consultant, and our expectation is, is that we'll have, you know, a follow-up workshop where you all can share your input together. We do recognize that there is, that we do need much more formal policies related to how we rent our fields, how we operate our fields, and even things as simple as paying to line the fields. You know, these are clearly our customers, and we need to provide those kind of services. The consultant is working, it is not going as quickly as I had hoped, but we are anticipating a follow-up workshop with you all after your one-on-ones, and then the more direct work with the staff, so, thank you.
Thank you again. Yes, thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else? Mr. Clerk?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Kavanaugh? Thank you. Consent agenda, items five through seven. Number five, a motion approving the minutes from previous city commission meetings, 2025-0925SP and 2025-0925R. Number six, a resolution, 2025-147, a resolution authorizing an agreement with each of the following 10 shortlisted firms for general professional engineering services pursuant to RFQ number 07-09-25-11. First one, Calvin Giordano and Associates, Inc. Number two, Carhanan Proctor and Cross, Inc. Number three, Craven Thomas and Associates, Inc. Number four, Chen Moore and Associates. Number five, Flynn Engineering Services, PA. Number six, H2M Architects and Engineers, Inc. Number seven, Keith and Associates, Inc. Number eight, Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc. Number nine, RJ Behar and Company, Inc. And number 10, Sun Tech Engineering, Inc. Number seven, resolution 2025-158, a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to execute the Fifth Amendment to the inter-local agreement with Broward County for community shuttle services. Are there any items the commission wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
Pull seven.
Pull seven? Okay. Anyone else? Any other item to pull? Just seven? Is there a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items five and six?
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Kavanaugh, please call the roll.
Commissioner Rydell.
Yes.
Commissioner Welsh.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes. Okay. Is there a motion and a second to approve consent agenda item number seven?
Move it.
Second. Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Rydell, seconded by Commissioner Welsh. Any discussion? Josh. About Commissioner Rydell.
My question is this, we've done a couple, obviously this is the fifth of a number of extensions. Is there a reason you're giving me two years as opposed to a year?
This year, the county decided to go to two years. Truthfully, I think it's the, they're behind on their plans to do the route study and make a determination on the future and how they can change the community shuttle buses throughout Broward County to make them more productive.
Is there going to be, and I guess I'll turn to Terrell on this, is there going to be an issue if we amend this to do it as a year? Does anyone have an issue with that?
It's a Broward County form agreement, so Broward County may have an issue with that.
And I'll tell you my thinking of it. There has been such a, some, a bunch of our neighboring cities have put a lot of this money into microtransit and some of those other things. We don't have that here yet. I'm not a fan of agreeing to two years where there may be an opportunity 15 months from now to maybe modify something. So that's my only thought. If you're telling me it's Broward County and we got to do it, we don't have a better option on the table today. So I'll support it. I would much rather do this for a year, right? That's just my thought, because it's a little odd that some of our earlier agreements have been year agreements. And I brought this up last year on the year agreement to extend it, that microtransit is here, we have to start re-envisioning, our community bus is totally lax ridership, lax engagement, I understand we need to provide it. I support a year. I don't know if anyone has, wants to comment on it.
We may be able to terminate early if you wish, that might be a better option.
And let me clarify that the purpose of this agreement is to establish how much money they reimburse us. So, right, which, it would be a similar agreement if they were reimbursing us for microtransit.
Understand it completely, but the problem is if we had a microtransit plan in place that's different than having an agreement to be reimbursed for this amount, we're not going to be able to go back to the trough, for lack of a better term, and seek reimbursement for microtransit if we're already seeking it for community bus.
We'd have to change it out.
I know. That's my only consideration. I'll ask Commissioner Welsh to chime in, but I would rather do this for a year, but if you're telling me I can't, then I can't.
Commissioner Welsh.
Because to your point, that was always the thought in mind, that we were waiting for significant shovels in the ground for a bigger, broader need for the microtransit for us to be able to provide that level of service to our residents all along. So, you know, I hope there's enough by 2027 for us to be able to do that.
I'm hoping for it.
Well, that would be good. So is the consensus? So is the consensus that we would need to have a statement in there to leave early, Or City Attorney Pyburn, sorry?
That's okay. So, I mean, there's not anything in the Fifth Amendment, and I'm trying to find the termination clause, because we usually have a termination clause in the agreement itself. My concern is that if we deviate from their form contract by suggesting a term different than what they are providing, Broward County may not be accepting of that versus if we terminate early, I think we have, we're in a better position to be able to do that.
And if we terminate early, is there a penalty?
I don't believe so, other than we wouldn't get the money for the shuttle service. But I'm trying to confirm that now.
Okay.
Yes, this is for reimbursement in the years. So Broward County also, in the past couple of years, had had a plan to consolidate all contracts to one service provider. Many of the other cities use a contractor to run their shuttle buses. There was an option to maintain your own, so part of their year-to-year continuation was anticipation of major changes to come. That just has not come to fruition at the county level.
The termination clause in the original agreement is six months, so it's a six-month notification.
Okay.
I mean, that's 8.1 in the original agreement that predates all of it. I mean, I got you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rydell.
All your lawyers looking it up right now, too, so.
I was just, I was just pointing out to Commissioner, excuse me, I've promoted you, to City Manager Rose, that I just had a question as it relates to the, what is it, the Third Amendment to the SRTAX agreement, the inter-local agreement for SRTAX with Broward County, which provides essentially that money goes towards the community shuttle service before it goes towards microtransit, and just because we cancel this doesn't necessarily mean that we are guaranteed to get the money for microtransit.
So the microtransit money is actually in a different pot. It's in the same pot as the formulaic money for resurfacing. And because our expectation is, is that we won't have the critical mass developed in the Main Street project area in this two-year timeframe with COs and people actually living in the units, we expect that we would use those funds, at least for the next two years, for resurfacing before we made that money available for microtransit. But, I mean, there's no reason, if it doesn't matter to the contract, we would just bring it back for another renewal if it doesn't, you know, if it doesn't cause any problems. So, you know, we can...
Commissioner Brody?
So let me ask you this. Year after year, has that money that we have gotten increased, year after year?
It has decreased. They review our costs and...
So we're getting less money each year?
Right. They reimburse us based on how many hours the buses were on the road, but that is after they look at, we have to supply all our costs, and then they review those, and then they add up and they come up with a total, what they're going to pay per hour. So it is dependent upon the city's cost. They are getting stricter and eliminating a few things that they won't reimburse us So some of the costs have gone down for that reason.
My mind's like in six different places right now with this, because if we're losing, if we're getting less money, what's the vantage of the county signing a two-year contract versus a one-year? Because after doing it every year and decreasing it, it benefits them. So what, what am I missing here?
The cost hasn't, it doesn't cost, it's a very difficult accounting for this, but in general, the cost operate, the community shuttle bus, is reimbursed by the county. We used to also get partial, we get partial funding for the staff, the city staff, that runs that program, including even a percentage of the public works.
So let me ask you this. In the contract, does it equate for the second-year decrease? Or is it the same amount of money we're going to reimburse year after year?
It's based on, it's based on, it's based on the cost.
What are we guaranteeing with this contract, then?
This is just two more years.
Just that they reimburse us something?
Just they're going to reimburse us. This doesn't set the cost. They're going to reimburse us, but that, we just submitted our 2025s, our 2024 costs. It's a year behind by the time we get reimbursed.
Well, you're hitting the nail on the head, Commissioner Brody, because this is what I bash my head against the wall with, that we essentially have something that we is underserving our community, that is paid for by the county, that could be better, but then you lose county dollars. It's a little futile, but it's necessary because we're providing a service to a very limited basis of our residents, which is why I believe microtransit is the way to transition it all to, and take the same funding.
And I'm in agreement. I'm totally in agreement with that, Commissioner. I think the micro is where we need to be, because I think you can get a little bit more, you know, more on the molecule level of picking people up, rather than this big old ugly bus that we're not getting the same amount of money back for. So I'm not sure why the two years is such a, such a big deal for them, or for us, or for them. One year should be one year. I don't know, understand why they're going to the two years. Can somebody explain why all of a sudden they're going to do a two year?
So separate the issue. In my mind, the reason they've gone to a two-year agreement instead of a one-year agreement is because the county is having a hard time keeping up with the administration of this program. They've talked about streamlining. They don't believe they'll be prepared to roll out these alternative transit modes until two years. So they're trying to streamline the process. This agreement just provides for us to be reimbursed for the service. If we want to have a separate discussion about whether we should be providing the service at all, you know, that's, that's a different conversation. Right now, we have the two routes that are being reimbursed by the county, and for the most part, they're reimbursing the full cost of those services.
So we're getting reimbursed, the way I understand it, is that our ridership has decreased and the miles we're putting on these buses? So that's why the formula changes?
No, it goes, the formula goes off of actual costs. So each year, we submit our actual costs to run the program.
So if we're spending less, because we're not using it as much, the need's not there?
Correct. We're spending a little less, and they've, they also have cut back on some of the things that were reimbursable prior years that aren't. Office supplies, promotional material, things of that nature. It is fairly small, but it does add up over time.
So in the world of everything going up, this has to be the one thing that everything goes down on?
It's going down because nobody's using it.
Right, exactly. I know why. We returned a bus three years ago because of lack of use.
Commissioner Rydell, did you have anything further?
Yeah, yeah, I signed back in just to, I signed back in because Sheila's comment is a little, it doesn't make sense to me, and I'll tell you why. I don't understand how the first four agreements are year-long increases, and now we jump to two with the justification because the county can't administer it anymore. So that just doesn't make sense to me. I just, I would like the opportunity to say, can we do this for a year? As opposed to two years. And I understand it's two different pots, and I understand it's different with microtransit, and I understand the county gave us a form. I'm only bringing that up because things are changing rapidly, and there's approvals with the county through the SRTAX dollars, not just for community transportation in this vein, but for microtransit and other options that are coming from about three different pots that other cities are, I mean, Pompano, Deerfield, Hollywood, Fort Lauderdale, they're getting funded back on so many different things that if we lock ourselves into a two-year agreement, I don't want to shortchange us if we try to seek another pot, or we have to cancel this agreement for something else.
But those are coastal.
Fully aware they're coastal, but Coral Springs just signed a contract with one.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Coral Springs is now doing microtransit.
Didn't know that.
So, listen, I didn't mean to bring up a giant conversation. If you're telling me it's two years is the only thing, I'm fine with it, but I think we're shortchanging ourselves in being on the front end of different forms of transportation in the city of Coconut Creek.
Well, we have two years with the six-month exit, exit expiration.
So maybe the suggestion would be to table this to the next meeting and let us look at the alternatives.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Thank you, thank you. A quick question. Are we losing money on this?
No.
Okay, so we're not losing money?
No.
We're providing a service to residents?
Correct.
Correct? Right? This is not the Butterfly Shuttle, Butterfly Express, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I, for not losing money, we're servicing some residents who are using it. I totally understand the rideshare. I've been leading the charge on that since 2023, trying to get freebie and doing all that stuff. Unfortunately, in Coconut Creek, it's hard to do that because you have to have 35 miles per hour on a lot of the roads in order to have some of those, those microtransit, right?
Some are limited, some of them are limited by the speed.
And I know they're moving, I know they're moving in a direction to kind of make it more, you know, for roads that are above 35 miles per hour. I don't see really the discussion. I mean, I'm okay to, if that's what the city manager wants to do, to push it to the next meeting, to do a little more investigation. But if we're not losing money and we're providing a service, I don't even know why we're having this discussion, to be honest, but I am, I'm open to moving it to the next meeting if that's going to be more clear for the rest of the commission.
Thank you.
I have no objection to that. It would allow us to investigate in any concerns that the county might have and when they think it might be available to make microtransit an eligible expense under the SRTAX.
Okay. Okay, so are we going to move to table it?
Move table it.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have? Mr. Kavanaugh, need a roll? We have a motion and a second to table, agenda item seven. Okay.
Commissioner Rydell.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes.
Ordinance number 2025-051, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Coconut Creek, Florida, authorizing the mayor to execute the Fourth Amendment to the lease agreement binding between the city of Coconut Creek and T-Mobile South, LLC, which provides for the continued leasing of city land for a communications tower and a modification to the equipment on the tower, expansion of the ground lease, and replacement of equipment on the ground, providing for recordation, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. This item is before you at this time for a first reading.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Rydell.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote due to my relationship with T-Mobile, being employed with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a discussion? Any, any questions or discussion on this item? Seeing none, Mr. Kavanaugh, please call the roll.
Commissioner Rydell.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes. Number nine, City Attorney. Thank you.
Ordinance number 2025-49, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Coconut Creek, Florida, amending the city's code of ordinances by amending Chapter Two, Administration, Article Three, Departments, Division Two, Police Department, Section Two-57, Use of Off-Duty Police Officers or Police Service Aides for Unofficial Functions, to update fees for the use of off-duty police officers and police service aides, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date. This item is before you at this time for second reading and public hearing.
Move it.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Welsh, seconded by Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk. This is, ordinance is up for second reading. As I stated previously, we are just changing all of the hourly rates for the detail by $10 to align with the collective bargaining agreement. However, we are asking to amend the effective date to November 2nd to allow sufficient time to implement administratively.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh, please.
We will need a motion to amend to reflect the November 1st effective date.
Move to amend the modification to reflect the start date.
Thank you.
Second.
Amendment, motion was made by Commissioner Rydell, seconded by Commissioner Welsh. Thank you. Now, we need to call the roll on the amendment approval.
Commissioner Rydell.
On the amendment, yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Sorry, I did not. Just wait a second. Any yes?
Do yes or no?
Can you start over, please?
Yes, I will start over.
Yes, no.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes, thank you. Now, now we will vote on the motion itself. Mr. Kavanaugh, please call the roll.
Commissioner Rydell.
Yes.
Commissioner Welch.
Yes.
Commissioner Brody.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman. Mayor Riley.
Yes. Thank you. Number 10, resolution 2025-161, a resolution authorizing the city manager or designee to execute an agreement with Redevelopment Management Associates, LLC, to prepare a comprehensive set of economic development and redevelopment strategies, along with an associated long-term financial analysis pursuant to RFP number 06-18-25-11.
Move it.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Commissioner Welsh, seconded by Commissioner Rydell. Thank you. Peter Gay.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and everyone. So this resolution before you tonight authorizes the city manager to enter into an agreement with Redevelopment Management Associates, or RMA, to prepare a comprehensive economic development and redevelopment strategy, along with a long-term financial analysis for the city. This initiative will provide a clear, data-driven roadmap to guide future growth, attract quality investment, and strategically revitalize underutilized areas, all while aligning with Vision 2030 goal of being an innovative and engaged community with a small-town personal touch. The consultant's scope of work is organized into several key phases. The first phase is data collection and market assessment, where they will evaluate market conditions, demographics, and infrastructure capacity, and identify privately-held, underutilized properties for redevelopment potential, and also development opportunities for city-owned vacant land. Phase two will include a strategic development, which will entail developing targeted economic and redevelopment strategies for the city. And then phase three, which I'm most excited about, is the financial and implementation analysis, where they will prepare a long-term financial model to test the impacts of the development and redevelopment, and also create a long-term financial analysis for the city. And of course, they'll end with the final report and presentation, which will be presented to the city commission at a future time. The agreement totals approximately 127,000, which is within the amount that was contemplated for this project. And the consultant was selected through a competitive request for proposal process, where we had seven firms that submitted, and then we had a selection committee made up of our deputy city manager, director of finance and administrative services, and the director of sustainable development. And we ranked our RMA number one based on the evaluation criteria in our RFP, as well as their extensive experience and qualifications. The project will take about six to eight months to complete, and it includes outreach to privately-owned properties and stakeholders to ensure that the recommendations are practical, market-supported, and driven by the community. In summary, this plan moves us forward, given the city an implementable, fiscally responsible roadmap for economic growth and redevelopment. So staff does recommend or approve in this resolution. We also have with us today Mr. Christopher Brown. He's the principal with RMA, and we're available if you have any questions for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Seems we have quite a few questions. Vice Mayor Wasserman, please.
Thank you, Mayor. They answered two of the questions towards the back end of that, right? How did we select them? And is somebody here, you know, from, from the consultancy group? But what we question is, I have, how will this affect our small businesses? You know, let's say that there's a recommendation for redevelopment of a plaza or something. You know, how would it affect small businesses that we currently have? I mean, and maybe somebody can address that, or, you know, would it help? Would it not help? Like, what is the goal? Is there a goal focused on small businesses in this? Or is there, is there a, is there, can he come up? Or can maybe Sheila speak to it? Thank you so much.
You can speak to it.
And thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. My name is Chris Brown. I'm one of the principals of RMA. It's an excellent question. I'm going to tell you that in my past experience, I ran the redevelopment agency for the City of Delray Beach for 10 years, and it was an exercise in small business. I know a lot about small business. When I went to Delray, there was 500,000 square feet of vacant space on Atlantic Avenue in Delray, and I leased every one of them. And it took me 10 years, but they were all small business. I come from a background of working for large developers, and I... When I went to Delray, I'd call up the big tenants, you know, in America, and they'd say, "Thank you, Chris, for calling me, but we're not interested in urban development." So I said, "Okay, I have to switch my strategy. I'm going to small business." Small business is our forte, and it's the greatest strength of our country.
I appreciate that. And I think, as the Commissioner just said, your energy is great energy, really nice energy you're pushing out. But no, yeah, we have a lot of small businesses in the city. The heartbeat of our city is small business. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we're goal-oriented on maintaining them, growing them, and hopefully bringing in more. Because, you know, sometimes we'll go to ribbon cutting or something, and, you know, you have these conversations with these business owners, and you want to help so bad, right? You want to do everything you can to get them off the ground, to give them all the support they need. And I just want to make sure that if we're going into this re... You know, this redevelopment strategy, and I just want to make sure that we always keep them in the back of our mind and at the front of our mind at the same time, too.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the question.
Commissioner Brody?
Well, I do love the energy, because, you know, sometimes we get up here and nobody wants to have any energy, and, you know, you definitely nailed that. I think this is important, and you guys all know how I feel about spending money on consultants. If we could do it in-house, I'd rather do it in-house. But in this case, and the whole reason we're switching to an elected mayor is because our city is changing. And if you don't realize that, you're going to realize it here in another month when you see all the trucks over there starting to do, you know, tear up that farmland. We are not the same city we have been since 1967. We are changing, and this day is changed. And the thought of how do we get to the next level of this without impacting residents' taxes? Well, I think going to the elected mayor is that first piece of it, where we say, "That person's going to have to now go out and bring people in." And the hand-in-hand conversation is, how do we do that without this information that you're going to be providing us? Because that mayor needs guidance. That mayor is going to need a strategic plan. I think our city staff is going to need a plan to see how we go about redeveloping areas that need it. And I think this is just a hand-in-hand conversation that we have to have. And although I hate spending money on consultants, and I understand I was a consultant for 25 years, and so... But I hate spending money on something I think we could do, but I don't think we can do this in hand. I think the real conversation is, how are we going to help this next mayor or the first elected mayor in Coconut Creek be successful? And this is the first step to make that happen.
Thank you. Commissioner Rydell?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Brown, for being here. Just a couple of quick questions. I was going through, obviously, your bid submission. Could you explain to me the relationship your company has with Pompano Beach? Is it with Pompano Beach Municipalities? Or is it with Pompano Beach the CRA? Because it looks like you're on staff for them, like they're paying you monthly.
We have a contract with both the city. For example, one of the functions we provide for the city is parking consulting. I happen to be a parking expert. It's because of my real estate background. And we have contracts with both the CRA and with the city.
Like an ongoing... Is it a long-term contract? Is how you put it in, like, the bid submission?
Yeah, they're usually... It's from three to five years. But our bread and... For example, with the CRA and the city, we do a lot of business recruitment. So we find people to develop, and we find businesses to open up restaurants and so on and so forth.
No, no, I get that completely. But when you're looking at your current list of other municipalities you're servicing, it's an outlier, because you're essentially on a monthly salary through Pompano in some capacity, as opposed to a majority of the other jobs you've done have been exactly what you're doing here, where a lump-sum, you know, consultant job. That's the only outlier. I just wanted some clarity on it.
Did I answer the question, or do I need to...
Well, kinda. You kinda did. So I was just...
Yeah, we have a fixed fee.
So are you on fixed with CRA and the City of Pompano?
Yeah, we have a fixed fee with CRA and another fixed fee with the city.
Okay. That's what I was asking, because I reached out prior to the meeting to a couple of the Pompano Beach elected officials. They're very happy with your service.
Now, we did run the CRA, because we also manage CRAs. So that was also a fixed fee. That was from 2009 to 2017. So...
I noticed that, but in your current scope of work, I guess, and to be clear on it for the past... You list a three-year block period that you're currently on a monthly salary from Pompano. So my only question I was asking was, is that... And you answered it, which is both the municipality and the CRA?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. I think this is well-needed. I think it's comparable. I looked at a lot of the other bid submissions. They know the area extraordinarily well. They're based in Pompano Beach. They're vested in the community. I support the motion tonight.
Commissioner Welsh?
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown, will you be the one on staff to head up this strategy?
Yeah, well, the person that's going to take the lead in this is our Economic Development Director, Lynn Dillinger. She would be here tonight, but she happens to be on vacation. So... But I'll be involved as well.
Okay.
Both Lynn and I have a very deep background in real estate development. So I was... I've worked in... This assignment that we do, that we're presenting to you tonight, this is what we're really good at.
I didn't understand that. What did you say? This is what you're really...
This is our best. This is our best card. So you're getting one of the best, and this is the one we love the most. We love to go out and look at sites and identify what can happen on this site. How can this change the city? What kind of tax revenue can you get? And so on and so forth. And we think about the retailers, because the earlier question from the Commissioner was, do you think about small business? And absolutely.
And perspective new, particularly on the four city-owned parcels that we have right there in the main street area. I was very interested in the Oakland Park work project that was done there, particularly in developing the culinary arts. I was telling...
Yeah. Justin and our firm worked together. We redid the zoning code, and we launched... I have to tell you the funky Buddha story, because when we took the redevelopment reins for Oakland Park, we launched a website. We always do this. We launched a website. Within two weeks, we had two brothers who owned a bar in Boca Raton and said, "We'd like to meet with you." And that was the beginning of funky Buddha. So we attracted funky Buddha to Oakland Park. Their initial lease was, I think, 12,000 square feet. Then they went to 18. They now have over 100,000 square feet in Oakland Park. And that old Sears Roebuck Scratch and Dip... I think it was a Scratch and Dip store. It's too bad it's not there, but...
Well, all I know is the transformation was, like, was night and day, and owing the barrier of the tracks there. And were you also involved with the redevelopment of the projects on the west side of the tracks?
Not as much.
Okay, the culinary...
We were mainly on the east side of the tracks, although we did discuss, I think, as early as that time, to move City Hall.
Yes.
And move it to the west side of the track. Justin is my witness.
Well, I appreciate you, Mr. Brown.
By the way, we love your director.
Mr. Brown being here, even though it was the higher bidder, I understand the realization of why the determination was made to bring your firm forward. And we're really looking forward to having the consulting fee.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Welch.
And the resulting work, rather than hiring somebody full-time to continue with those salary and benefits. Because once your work's done, then our work starts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think what we're calling it is smart growth. This is such a necessity... This is so necessary for smart growth for our city. And I have to say, your past projects and your credentials are very impressive.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, I did some homework on this, and thank you very much. Yes, we'd be very pleased to have you onboard. Okay, any further questions? Okay. Mr. Kavanaugh, please call the roll.
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman?
Yes.
Mayor Riley?
Yes. Thank you. Nice meeting you, Christopher. Number 11, Resolution 2025-153, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the interlocal agreement with Broward County for the purpose of constructing sidewalk improvements within the Sample Road Right-of-Way State Road 834, associated with the SRTAX-funded municipal transportation project known as Sample Road Improvements. Print COCO-016. Is there a motion and a second?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Rydell, seconded by Commissioner Brody. Discussion?
Good evening.
Commissioner Rydell?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Osama. I'm sorry.
He's so excited. He just wants to know. Osama, let me just get this right. So we're getting $2.5 million to do a project our residents aren't paying for, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Nothing further.
That about does it.
That's great. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners? So this resolution is authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the interlocal agreement for the installation of a multi-use path on the south side of Sample Road from Lyons Road to the entrance of Trezance Park. I have to mention, the city has been very successful in leveraging SRTAX dollars as far as roadway projects. This is due to the strong knowledge of our staff and strong cooperation between our departments, utilities in engineering, sustainable development, finance. And I have to say this, it would be remiss of me not to mention our city manager, Sheila Rose. And why I'm mentioning her, because every time we encounter an obstacle on an issue, she makes that phone call behind the scenes, and things are rolling again. So, thank you. So, this project, as Commissioner Rydell said, it is for the amount of $2.4 million, and it's from SRTAX dollars, not paid by our residents. And the total for the project is 2.7, because we only received $300,000 in design. That was paid, and that was completed already. So the project entails the installation of a shared-use path, approximately 4,000 linear feet, with three bus shelters along the way. Any questions? It's 10 feet wide. Yeah, we mentioned it originally. That's correct.
Great. Any further questions? Commissioner Rydell, you're up on it.
I didn't clear it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Welsh?
Yes. The only thing better would be if we were also duplicating it on the north side of Sample Road. But nonetheless, we'll take what we can get, because the folks there in the township highly use that south side sidewalk. And I know it would be even double the use with it being so wide. So, you know, thank you for all your work. And I know the relationship begins with the city manager for getting these projects funded and through, but it also boils down to you and other Public Works and all the other department leaderships as well.
But I have to mention, we didn't work on this project until this point. It's Justin's group who were able to secure the money, and now we're taking over construction.
Okay, well, I'll take back that compliment, and I'll hold it over there.
Good job, Justin.
Okay. Anyone else? No, we're good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kavanaugh, please call the roll.
Commissioner Rydell?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wasserman?
Yes.
Mayor Riley?
Yes.
Okay. City Manager, your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners. Just a couple of quick items. Peter Gay Lake and I will be attending the International City Manager Association Conference in Tampa from Sunday to Wednesday. I still will be available by phone and following my emails. So I'll keep work going, but we will be at that conference. I'd like to give you a quick update on the status of the fire station design and the progress in that area. We held a kickoff meeting with Curry Sowers on October 14th, where the Public Works team worked with a volunteer team from the Fire Department to make sure they worked through any of the programming items. And they've set a revolving set of meetings every Tuesday afternoon at 3:00 to work through the programming and get that design kicked off. In addition, the letters of interest for the construction manager at risk were advertised this Sunday, or on Sunday, October 19th, which I guess was this Sunday, and they're due November 18th. So we anticipate making a recommendation for an award to that CM@Risk firm in January of 2026. So that's progress moving in that area. I did email to you all an update on our proposal for the upgrades to the Butterfly Festival. There are just... We are just proposing two fairly small upgrades this year because of the time it takes to plan those events. We are proposing a $20 fee for non-residents to ride the rides. It'll be handled through a bracelet system, and the rides will be in the secured fenced area. So we think that that'll at least cut the lines down and provide some more priority for the residents. In addition, we're going to add a food demonstration or a cooking demonstration this year. And that's it. And in addition, I've been working with the city attorney's office on a sponsorship package that we anticipate providing a more streamlined process for businesses that might want to sponsor city events. In years past, it's been a little haphazard, and there've been some concerns raised. So we'll streamline that and give all the departments the guidance on how they can solicit sponsorship for various events, such as the farmer's market, the Butterfly Festival. So that'll all be a streamlined process, and I'll forward that to you in the next couple of weeks. That's all I have to offer.
Thank you. City Attorney, P. Byrne?
What is the... I'm sorry. What is the...
Oh, it'll come to you then, tonight.
Okay.
It's done.
I'm looking.
It's written.
I'm looking.
It's here. It's in my drawers.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Thank you again for your continued support of me in my office earlier this evening. I really appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Also, thank you. Also, I just wanted to mention that the lawsuit that we filed against FDOT regarding the turnpike, we expect responsive pleadings to be filed next week. I'll keep you updated there. And just as an update as it relates to the e-bike ordinance that came before you a couple, I guess about a month ago, that we had postponed, it appears that we are most likely going to move forward with rules instead of... and signage instead of an ordinance, and we'll share that with you once it's finalized. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rydell?
Yeah, I'll be brief. I met with the consultant at the end of last week for Parks and Rec. I know you all did as well. We need to talk about this globally. I was disappointed. I said this to Sheila. I'll say it to all of you. The scope of work that the consultant was engaged to do was lacking, candidly. He did an assessment of everything outdoor, nothing indoor, nothing outdoor with courts. So it's flawed from the inception. I'd give you an asterisk in terms of the data provided to you, and I said all this to Sheila. The data is flawed also, because when you look at the usership of sports, for example, a girl or a boy can be doing soccer, basketball, and volleyball, and they're counted three different times under the metric system used by the consultant. Meaning, so if you look at what you believe is being serviced, it's actually a flawed number. So in the presentation all of you got, and I got too, it's a skewed number for the purposes of what we're asserting our Parks and Rec team is serving. It could be right, it could be wrong. It's definitely wrong, because I think probably more than 50% of the kids that use our sports are... I don't want to say recycled kids, but the kids that follow the seasons, because that's just naturally how it does. So we really need to talk about this, and we really need to make some deep choices in how we want to move Creek sports forward, whether it's, I believe, candidly, it's a private partnership, it's a private-public partnership with these sports of bringing in professionals to run them, because my experience in the past year was... in professionals to run them because my experience in the past year, we have lost more kids to other cities, and it's unacceptable that my neighbor doesn't want his kids to play in Creek sports. Totally unacceptable, needs to change. So, I'll say that briefly. The other thing I'll say, Barb Hendricks, Chase Pacoti, and Sherri Stabile did one of the most effective middle school presentations to a group of sixth, then seventh and eighth graders about bullying, about cyber crimes, about catfishing, about everything that kids, that we were originally marketing at the high school, that middle school kids need to hear. And I would love to see this in a, in a platform that we could give kids service hours for watching a two-hour video, or doing something that we could push this out. And the other people that we need to promote this to is parents. Because the parents aren't looking at their kids' devices, and I say it of the prime age of having two kids that are right in the middle of, of the disaster of raising kids in this day and age. We need to get these messages out, and we have a team right now that is going to our schools, specifically our middle schools, with these anti-bullying, anti-catfish, anti-vaping, you know, talking about what social media means. Somebody wants you to send a picture of them and maybe something that you shouldn't be sending a picture. Our kids don't know this. And I would love to see that in some way, and I know, is Freddie still here? If there's some way to visualize that and push it, it is the most effective presentation I have ever seen, and they owe a huge, a huge amount of credit to what they've put together. So, please relay that to your team. It was, it was mind-blowing. Thank you, everybody. That's all I have.
Is there any way that that can be incorporated in the DARE program?
The problem is, I think it's age brackets. Like, DARE, you're hitting elementary saying, like, say no to drugs. Middle school is like, they all have these, and they all have no idea the power in their hand.
I gotta tell you, in elementary too, the lower grades, they need that too.
But this presentation, Jacks, just so you know, is not, is not elementary's little friendly. I'll say that.
I get it, but it can be adjusted. Program can be adjusted.
It could be, but I think we're hitting a market right now that we need to figure out a way to monopolize, especially for you.
The more we do, the better, of course. Yeah, absolutely. I agree. Commissioner Welsh.
And along that same line, Commissioner Rydell, I was asked at one of the meetings by a high school principal about help with vaping. Because in their assessment reports, that's one of their largest, a number of incidents right now is vaping. And we did have, remember Jim Pelosi from Broward County Crime Commission? When he came and presented these robust portrayals of what not just fentanyl, but everything that could have possibly affected these children. And I asked Sheila if there was a way that we could get a presentation strictly on vaping, and to your point, also for the, for the parents, because they have no idea what's in there and what they're doing, you know, to their bodies. So, I thought it was important that the principal recognized that and asked if there was any assistance. So, I appreciate you working on that. And Commissioner Rydell, I totally agree with you about my Zoom meeting with the consultant for the Parks and Recreation. He, I gave him a number of items that were not in there, that I thought were going to be in there and were going to be addressed, and it was about anything that, anything sports or event-wise that takes place on our fields, in our buildings, or in our, our land. So, I mean, I think it's, and it should be an entire picture in toto so that we know who's using it, and are we being consistent in how we're doing so? Not only in charging, but allocation of time. And anyway, I won't go on and on, but I did ask him when he was going to be done so that we could meet as a group and absorb this. Because I didn't sit through the Parks and Recreation meeting. I didn't think it was relevant. Let them digest it, and then we were going to have our one-to-one. I'm just gonna end on that. I think, but I do want to say that anything we can do to not just small business, but business in the way of sprouts, if we can support them, because they are doing so much good work out in our community in form of giving back, that I hope that we, as a community, can support them as well. So, anyway, thank you, Terrell, for all your hard work, you and your mighty team, and we'll see you next year.
Commissioner Brody.
Sorry. I just got two quick things. One, I sat with the consultant myself today, and the one thing that bothered me the most about this was it was driven about revenue. Revenue, 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 how much money they can, you know, fill out our fields and make money on. I'm going to be honest with you, I don't care if we make any money on those fields. What I want is our residents to be able to play on them. And I don't, I think that's kind of lost in the smock of everything. We're, he was, only talked to me about how you can maximize your profit margin and revenue and getting these professional guys to come in. No, man, these are parks for our families and residents. If we're sitting there and allowing these, these paid teams to come in here and pay, our residents are now not on those fields. And the other part of that, and I'm going to say this 1,000 times, I don't like locks on fences. Because he kept saying, well, you're only 50% maximizing your fields. Well, yeah, because the fields are locked. That's the problem. You want to maximize the fields, take the damn locks off it and let our residents play. This is my problem. It's like, I don't know what he was, what he was told, but it missed the mark. And so, we sat there for 45 minutes, and I had listened to this thing, and I said, look, man, I've been, I was involved in this since 2008, and it's the same problems habitually every year. And, and now we're talking about, well, revenue, revenue, revenue. And I think that's not what the intent of this whole thing was, is to revenue our fields. It was about being able to get access to our residents who live here and pay the taxes for those fields to be, get on them. I could care less if an adult league from anywhere else plays on. I don't care about those people. I care about our residents. And I think this is being lost in how we can maximize money. This, we're already paying for the fields, they're our fields. So, why are we going after money? We should be going after time and allow our residents to get on the fields and the, and our Coconut Creek. Yeah, that's what, what did I say? Yeah, so, yeah, so this whole thing, I think we've missed the mark. I think he's missing the mark of what the intent and what we need. We need our residents on the field. We need to keep people who are paying for the fields out of our fields. There's a hierarchy. There's always been a hierarchy of how we rent these fields. I don't know where that's gone. I don't know how this is going about. But I go out there and I'm watching adults out there playing on our fields rather than, than our residents. And I don't, and I get complaints. I'm in fields all the time. All these people that live in that neighborhood, I coached their kids. They're complaining. So, I have a problem with how we're looking at this. This isn't about revenue. This is about being able to get residents on the fields, and so they can play, and being able to use sports on the fields and get equal playing time. I have a problem selling our fields to outside entities. That's just how I feel. So, I'll leave it with that. We're all going to have a big discussion about this, but I did not like how that conversation went. Second thing, and last thing, I go in for my surgery on Monday, and so I will be out of the, I guess, laid up for about five days. Be out of the commission. So, yeah, so, you know, I'll still be able to get phone, but this is those moments when I say, be patient, because I'm sure what I have to carry around for five days is not going to make me a happy guy. So, just be patient. Understand, I'm going to try to use my sense of humor as much as possible to keep everything light, but it's going to be a difficult time next week, and I just, you know, give everybody, just give me a little room. I appreciate it. I'm going to tell you that the amount of support I've gotten from the community, both politically and from the residents and friends and family, it's just been amazing. I only had one bad one, and one guy I thought should have never even texted me to begin with. But other than that, you know, if I get 999 great text messages and one bad one, I can live with that. So, thank you very much for all the support, and, you know, everybody will be in the loop. There's been complete transparency on this condition, so there's no secrets of what's going on, and thanks for the support.
Vice Mayor Wasserman.
Thank you, Mayor. No, it's a couple of things. I'm glad he was here to, I'm glad he addressed the small business. You know, we had the ribbon cutting earlier this week, and it's just, it's just, I want our community to, and I don't know how, I don't know how we do it. I don't know how we let people know when there's a new business in town. I know we do our very best. We have social media, we do ribbon cuttings, we try and done Creek Eats. We've tried to do so much to get people to support our local restaurants, our local businesses. I just don't know what else we can do. Because when you go into a ribbon cutting, like we did the other day, my heart broke a little bit. Because this is a people's livelihood, and they're coming to our city, and, you know, what can we do? How can we assist without, you know, obviously spending our money? Because we don't want to do that. But how can we, what can we do? And I, you know, you brought up the Butterfly Festival. First of all, I think 20, I wish I'd known that you were going to talk about that. You know, I wish we'd gotten the email before you talked about it, because I think $20 for a non-resident is obscene to ride those rides. I'm just going to be honest. I think, I think $20 to charge a non-resident, $20 to ride those rides and wait in those lines for those rides is criminal, honestly. Too high, too high. I think it's too high. Maybe people disagree with me on this, it's fine, but we only, how many rides do we even have?
10 or 11.
And, and the lines are, I don't know. It seems like a lot of money to me. That's, that's my take. I think, whatever. Maybe people disagree, it's fine. I think $10, that's fine. I didn't ask. I'm still, I'm still speaking. But I think 10 would be more fair, but especially if you're going from 0 to 20. You know, you have never charged resident, non-residents before. We should always have priority for our residents 100% across the board. This doesn't do that. This doesn't provide priority for our residents because people are still paying the $20, and they're still getting in the same line as a resident. Is that correct?
So, the expectation is, and what we've found is that the kids are being, teenagers are being dropped off from all over the county because the rides are free. So, the expectation is, is that charging non-residents for the rides will focus the priority on the residents because it will be free, and the kids that don't have $20 won't be able to be dropped off from Pembroke Pines.
They can still get dropped off and hang out.
They can still get dropped off. They just won't be in the lines.
Do you have to pay $20 to enter the facility?
You have to pay $20.
Or do you have to pay $20 to get a wristband to ride the rides?
You have to pay $20 to enter the fenced area where the rides will be located.
Okay, okay. I still think it's a, it's a, whatever. I understand the perspective, but it kind of, there was a consensus on this day as to kind of move forward, you know, with a, with a fast pass for our residents. I understand it didn't, you know, there was discussions among staff not to do that because you're still going to have our residents waiting. The whole point was to try to cover, I hope it works. I hope this is a way of curbing it. Let's try it out. It's fine. I was upset with the consultant as well. I, I think I asked him at one point, like, what's the purpose right now? What are you trying to, I'm like, what is going on in this conversation? Because it just, he brought up, he brought up a comment where he said, because for me, I agree with Commissioner Brody, that there should be no locks on fences. I mean, you know, when people grew up in the 40s, 50s, and 60s, they were outside. They were running around, enjoying the, the schoolyard, the this, the that. Now, I hear a lot of people talk about how our kids are on their phones, they're on their computers, they're on their, you know, they don't go outside anymore. Well, we have this old mindset of, or we have this mindset of, well, they can't be, you know, they, they, they're going to run amok on this and that. I totally disagree. If we want to, we want to encourage our kids to be outside, to enjoy the environment, to participate, to get to know each other, to socialize with one another, there shouldn't be locks on fences. But I do understand if you rent a field and there's kids on there, things have to be taken care of, and that's why I think the park staff is always there to facilitate some of those things. Is that correct, Commissioner Brody? Or should that be correct?
Well, so that was the other part of the conversation, because the, how are they supposed to get people off fields when there's lightning arrestors going on? Because that's not happening. So, I, I think there's a staffing issue on top of this.
Correct.
I, the complaints I get from residents is that they go to the park to go with their kids, and they can't get on the fields. Then they spend 20, 30 minutes trying to find a ranger to unlock it.
Correct.
The other slap part of that is when there is an emergency and you got the lightning alarmers going off, some of these leagues don't give a crap about Coconut Creek policy. And they sit out there in the rain, they sit out there and the light detectors flashing, and our residents are walking off the field while those are not. And so, I, I think there's a balance here of, of the lock gates and not enough rangers. And, and I'm going to be honest with you, I don't think we've ever said no to a hire. So, if Parks and Rec needed more guys, they could have just said so and be able to cover it correctly. I, I think we're kind of, he missed some of the points that, the issues that we have.
But my, but my question is, if, if somebody's rented the field at 10:00 AM, they get to the field, and maybe the gentleman can speak to it as well.
I would love to.
Come, I mean, can I have him, can, can I just, I just want to know if, and Mayor, if I stepped out of line, please correct me and put me in line. But if it's 10:00 AM and I rented the field, and we're going out for our game, and there's people on the field, how do I handle the process of getting them off?
So, one of, one of the things that Parks and Rec did to us over the year, they started opening the fields to these come-play sessions, but then no one would come and, and clear the field. So, not only is the earnest on me to do that, but it's also on me to clean up the garbage.
Right.
Because the water bottles and what they do to the field is out of control. We might lose 25, 30 minutes out of our two-hour permit just prepping the field, just cleaning up what was brought in before we got there.
Okay.
Also, I personally have sent numerous videos of these outer-city clubs playing while the lightning alarm is on. So, I don't, I don't want to be too nitpicky here, but
Got it.
This is absurd to me. One final thing, the story I told you about the adult league, feel free to check with Parks and Rec. They provided no insurance whatsoever. So, I'm providing insurance. I'm showing the city that we're insured for injury or whatever. They provided nothing. If these adults tear an ACL, we're on the hook.
Got it.
Also, sorry, one last. There's no one policing the time. The adult game ran three and a half hours on a two-hour permit.
And that's why, and I appreciate it. Thank you. And that's why, what is the parks, you know?
So, let me, let me make something clear. We were asked, and the consultant was made available, and there were one-on-one sessions, and I apologize, I could not be in all of those, but the purpose of those sessions was so that you all could share your thoughts. They, he has been very open to adding items in the scope. He's, his goal was to listen to what your concerns were. So, it concerns me that you're, you're upset with him. The idea was you were supposed to be sharing your thoughts.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't get that impression, because it was more of a presentation.
Because he's supposed to be, he's supposed to be taking your thoughts and then compiling them so that we hear your thoughts.
It was like a whole, it was a whole PowerPoint. I was like on the thing for like 48 minutes.
I gotta tell you, I, I'm sitting here listening, and I feel like I was talking to a different consultant. I was the first, I'm telling you, I was the first interview, okay? And I, and he wasn't about the money. That wasn't our main and our primary concern. What he wanted was our input, and that's exactly what, that's the discussion we had. We did have different, obviously, I don't know, maybe we'll check and see if we said we had different consultants. But he was talking to us as a preliminary report. He wanted subjects from us to give him, to go back to the drawing board and then come back to us with suggestions and how we can move forward. That's what I got.
Okay.
I mean, I, I do about the adults and kids and residents, absolutely. Our residents should take priority. But I don't think it's fair to the adults, the young adults, because those parks are for everyone, like you said, everyone in our city. And we shouldn't just concentrate on the kids. There's enough fields, we have enough parks to accommodate all our residents. It, it isn't for, for participation, for what we have now?
Absolutely not. We have the most limited resources for the people that want to use our fields. There's less than a handful of basketball courts.
For our residents. For our residents.
Absolutely for our residents. I don't mean to interject that, but that's not, I wouldn't agree with that.
Okay. I'm going to, I just want to finish my, my comments, and then I'll roll to the mayor. I'm almost done, I think. That, 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 I loved when, when Commissioner Welsh said toto. You said toto tonight, like totally, you said toto. I liked it. I'm done. Thank you.
I said toto.
You said toto, like totally.
No, toto. I said so. Thank you so much.
You're done?
Yep.
Oh, okay, great. All right. Let's move forward. All right. Yesterday and today, we hosted Lyons Creek Middle for government, for city, Florida City Government Week. Yesterday was Lyons Creek Middle. Today was, I have them here. We had Lyons, we had Lyons Creek is yesterday. So we had ATC, we had Coconut Creek High School, we had Monarch, and our staff did an amazing job of presenting career choices, explaining their jobs. It was, the kids, I tell you, the middle, the middle schoolers were more engaged than the high schoolers. So it was really, it was a fun, it was a fun time. And one of the, one of the middle schoolers yesterday said at the end, Mayor, can you put a Chick-fil-A in our school? And I said, I would love to have that authority. Unfortunately, we can't. But they were, they were very engaging. They had great questions, and it was a great job. It was our first one, and they even asked if we're going to have it next year. So it was a great success. So gudus to all involved. Also, see, I should use my glasses. Dave Thomas was also with us. But we had a mayor's, there was a mayor's Realtor's breakfast last week, and it was all the cities in Broward that were involved. And I tell you, Coconut Creek really, really has a great reputation. And that was also a great experience, exchanging ideas with other cities, and to hear what the Realtors had to say to, to promote our cities. So, and they loved Coconut Creek. Also, also, I want to say, I would, yes, I'm contemplating, National League of Cities is being held in Salt Lake City. And I was going to ask for consensus if I could attend that in November, November 20th to the 23rd. Yes? Thank you. Okay.
So there's a consensus, Joe?
There's a consensus. Okay, great. Thank you. Also, Junior Achievement had their Impact Breakfast as well. And that was well-received. About 300, 400 people were there. And I have to tell you, Junior Achievement is a blessing to the city. And I know they're looking to expand. They were hoping to go into Fort Lauderdale, have another facility in Fort Lauderdale. And it's important that they know the impact that it, Junior Achievement has on our, on our students and on our city. So they are an asset. But, and that's all I've got. I want to say thank you. Of course, Commissioner Brody, I want to wish you the best. Know you're in our prayers, and we know you're going to be fine, and get back, get well soon.
Thank you.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.